Today is Tuesday, February 10th, approximately four o'clock in the afternoon. A call order to make County Board of Commissioners pick roles, please.
Mr. Duranchow?
Here.
Biggitt?
Here.
Hunick?
Here.
Eric?
Here.
Billy?
Here.
Les?
Here.
And Krieger?
Yes.
All members present.
Thank you. Stand for the invocation and then the pledge.
Lord God, our Heavenly Father, Master of all creations, we come before you this afternoon seeking your guidance, wisdom, and direction. Lord, we ask that you will lead and direct this board to work for this county. Grant them knowledge and understanding of the needs for this community. Lord, we ask that you will give this board commissioner strength, dignity, and honor to work for the county good of all. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You've all had an opportunity to take a look at minutes. It's your pleasure.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion on minutes? With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. This would be the time if anyone would like to come up and address the county commissioners and under public input. Well, we have people here, but nobody wants to talk. So with that being said, we'll move into petitions and communications. We have Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority here to make a presentation. Mr. Quinn, if you want to come down. Well, first of all, let's have a motion to receive.
Your vote.
Support. Discussion on it, Mr. Quinn.
I'd just like to say that this was a good opportunity for everyone in the county, and we certainly appreciate it. We certainly appreciate it. We'll work hard to maintain and keep our claims low here, so thank you very much.
Very good.
I have here a check which represents your portion of the MMR May's net asset distribution. You have some information in front of you regarding the net asset distribution. This is the, let's see, since 2006, this check represents just under $886,000 that's been in dues yet since 2006 as part of the MMR May net asset distribution program. And what it really is, is the MMR May is not an insurance company, okay? We are a group of self-insured entities under Public Act 138 as the Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority. So our Board of Directors sits at the top of our flow chart, made up of people just like you. And there's no stockholders, we're not an insurance company that says, you know, we're going to send off, you know, what we don't use off back to somebody that holds stock in the company in form of dividend check. We give our money, when there's money to be had, we give it back to our members like you guys. And since 2006, the MMR May has given back almost $150 million, okay? There's some other things that go into the net asset distribution, like our risk avoidance program, which you guys have taken advantage of as well. We highly encourage that, so tell all your departments heads to forward on their risk avoidance applications. We'd love to partner with you in risk management projects and help you guys avoid the losses. Not only are we willing to help you pay to avoid the losses, we're going to help you, we're going to reward you when you don't have them. So I have here a check in the amount of $168,135, and I congratulate the board and Bay County on your decision.
I'll take it.
There you go. So thank you very much. I appreciate your time. I appreciate it. And if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to apply, so.
Any questions? Other than a big thank you?
Yeah, we do thank you.
All right. And I thank you, and I thank you for your business, so thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Like all good husbands, what do you do with your money? You hand it over to the ladies. Next, we have recognition for Judge Thai who is officially retired and leaving Resolution 2015-20. What is your pleasure?
Your vote.
Support. Any discussions? If none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Cindy, if you could read the resolution, that would be wonderful. And Judge, if you want to come on up?
Resolution 2015-20, Bay County Board of Commissioners. Whereas Karen Thai has faithfully served the citizens of Bay County as judge of the Bay County Pro Bay Court since 1995, a 14th individual to hold that honor. Whereas Karen A. Thai was the first female judge to serve Bay County as sole, and after two decades on the bench, Bay County's first female judge is stepping down. Whereas Karen A. Thai received her BA from the University of Michigan in 1972, entered JPD from Detroit College of Law in 1976, and started her career with Wayne County Neighborhood Legal Services in 1976. In 1977, she came to Bay County continuing her career as an Assistant Prosecutor, Bay County Assistant Fund of the Court, Referee, and later, Bay County Court Administrator. Whereas, in addition to the duties of Judge in the Pro Bay Court, Judge Thai taught family law at Delta College from 1988 through 1990, and has served as an instructor for Michigan Judicial Institute, teaching family law to new judges from 1996 to the year 2006. And whereas, Judge Thai was appointed to the Michigan Board of Psychology and served from 1992 to 1904, currently serves on the Board of Directors for United Way of Bay County, 2002 to the present, Board of Directors for Bay Sail, nonprofit employer metal use sail training organization, 1999 to present, and is a former board member to Bay County Women's Center and the Boys and Girls Clubs of Bay County. And whereas, Judge Thai has been dedicated to reinvigilating and restoring families through the family court, and to creating and/or enlarging families through adoption. She has received 724 adoptions during her tenure. And whereas, during her career, Karen A. Thai dealt honestly and fairly with all matters brought before her while serving the people and the courts of Bay County and the state of Michigan. And whereas, Judge Thai has decided to retire after her long, active, and exemplary service to this community, who spent time with her supportive husband Tom, her daughter, and son-in-law, and her first grandchild. Therefore, be absolved that the Bay County Board of Commissioners and the Bay County Executive Honor Karen A. Thai for her outstanding judicial career and for her dedication to Bay County and further extend best wishes for a long, healthy, and well-deserved retirement. Senator Krieger, Chair of the Board.
Thank you, Cindy. Congratulations, Judge.
Can't let me go without saying a couple words. First of all, I want to acknowledge my husband, Tom Bach, and my daughter, Sarah Dan, everybody who are both here. And it's really sweet that they came to watch me say goodbye. They look to see me in action very often.
Well, I'm sure that after your home with Mr. Bach, he'll probably come back looking for some extra work.
I'd like to thank also, you know, the members of the Executive's Office, the Finance Department, the folks who work, you know, in Corp Counsel, Tim Quinn's been a big help, Tom Hickner, of course, and, you know, obviously to the Board, my funding unit, the Board of Commissioners. And I haven't had to come here very often, but whenever I do, it's usually with hat in hand, asking you for either money or permission to apply for another grant, or we've got a program idea. And you have always responded, not only graciously, but generously. And I have to thank you for that. I mean, it's been great to have a one-on-one relationship with you folks that I could call and say hi and tell you what we're looking at and have you be so accepting. One of the things that I think exemplifies the work that you do that makes such a difference is that you make all these budgetary decisions, and I, you know, I've been to the meetings where you deal with numbers and whatever. One of the things that you continue to fund very generously is the Public Guardian Program. And I just want to thank you sincerely for the work that you do to fund our Public Guardian. It makes such an incredible difference in the lives of our adult, vulnerable population. There's a large segment of our population that, you know, people who don't have family members to look out for them, people with dementia, Alzheimer's, and the Public Guardian right now is Catholic Family Services, but they've done a fabulous job. And you're to be commended for providing such a safe, comfortable, good environment for our most vulnerable population, so thank you for that. Your work in that regard really makes a big difference. Finally, I just want to say a word about this room. This room has special meaning for me. And so, you know, I'm very appreciative that you called me back here to say goodbye in this gorgeous, I call it a courtroom, but it's now your chambers. I tried my first case here as a young Assistant Prosecutor. Debbie was in the office when we did paternity cases. And, you know, I did a wedding here. Cindy, the clerk and I have done many different meetings and recall petitions in this room. I've appeared before, people like Leon Dartis, John X. Tyler, and who could forget Jean Penzine, who swore me in as a judge 20 years ago last month, right here on this spot. So this room has a lot of beautiful memories for me. This is really the crown jewel of the county building, and I appreciate the fact that you invited me back here to say goodbye to you all in this room. It's helped me create another really special memory of this place, and I've loved working with all of you, and I wish you all Godspeed as you continue the good work of the county. Thank you.
Next, we have Annette Rumel. She's with Great Lakes Bay Regional Convention and Visitors Bureau for an update. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, and thank you for allowing me to address you. I want to acknowledge the members of this chairman of your board, who also serves on my Board of Directors and oversees the efforts of not only Bay County, but also makes sure that we're on task in the entire Great Lakes Bay region as well. In front of you are some candles, and the first is an invitation to our annual meeting, which will take place on March 20th. That's where we'll dive deep into detail about where we place advertising efforts and what each of the staff members have been busy doing, not only in 2014, but what our anticipated plans for 2015 will be. So I'm not going to go into all those details here today because we don't have the time to do that this afternoon, so we'll go into that, and you will all be invited as our special guests. So please reserve the date on your calendar, and know that you will be receiving a more formal invitation in just the weeks to come. In front of you also is our 2013 audit, so if you refer to that, it's a three-ring binder in front of you. And first, we'll look at the Bay County Convention and Visitors Bureau audit. Keep in mind that we still have a Bay County Convention and Visitors Bureau with a Board of Representatives from Bay County that is from the hospitality industry and also represents the hoteliers, which is where our funding is derived from. There's a Saginaw County Convention and Visitors Bureau and Midland County Convention and Visitors Bureau. This is not duplication of efforts. This helps us achieve our goal, and that is to be face-to-face with a single staff person who's an information specialist, who can interact with the visitors and tell us about what's going on while they're here on their visit, and hopefully get them to repeat a visitor in the future by providing them with the opportunities that are coming up ahead of us in the event. In Bay County, we anticipate that we'll see about an almost 2.5% increase in revenues from 2013 to 2014, and the unaudited income margin for this year is $512,296.84.
I'm sorry.
That's the little happening if it can. Now, but you may say, okay, well, that's a decrease from 2013 where we had $534,000. Right now, we have one large property that's in arrears. I am working on having them pay, as well as three other small properties that are in arrears. So I'm working on these properties, and when they do contribute what they're supposed to contribute in taxes or in hotel assessment, then we'll see that revenue coming in. If you look at the Great Lakes Bay Regional Convention and Visitors Bureau 2013 audit, you'll see Bay County in 2013 contributed $400,935 towards a $2.2 million advertising effort. So where our entire budget before the consolidation was about $150,000 total for the entire Convention and Visitors Bureau, we're now part of a $2.2 million national advertising effort to try and draw visitors here. So your support has just been incredible in joining Bay County with Saginaw and Midland Counties, as well as driving our county forward and getting more visitors. The other piece of information that I want to share with you is this report. This is Smith Travel Research Report, and it's in front of you as well. This is our third-party confirmation of our performance. And so if you look at the top sheet in the upper corner, I want you to refer to the one that says Trend of Bay County, Michigan, okay? It's right up here in this corner. What that allows us to do is monitor the occupancy rates of the hotels in an aggregate form throughout Bay County. And you see, I also provided Midland County and Saginaw County as well. My contract with the Star people is that I can distribute this to those boards and committee members that I'm accountable to. I would ask that you not provide this in its full form to anyone outside of yourselves because it is proprietary to the company I purchase it from. But I thought you would find it of interest to see how rigorously we monitor the various components of our dealings on a day-to-day basis. So you see, the top line, that top column is on occupancy. And if you look across, you'll see, you can see all the way back to 2013 and for the entire year in 2014. Look at the very front part of 2014. Bay County actually did really well at the beginning of 2014 during the polar vortex. When Midland County and Saginaw County had a little bit more of a challenge, what was going on here in Bay County is we were working very hard on fishing tournaments, ice fishing tournaments, fishing schools, fishing classes, a lot of outdoor recreational activities even during the polar vortex. Now, at the end of the year, the last part of the quarter, September was down, October was up, and November and December were down. November and December were down because there were some meetings that occurred in Bay County last year that didn't take place this year. So it really helps us understand where the various businesses, is it coming from general tourism, is it coming from meetings and conventions, is it coming from our sports tournaments? We have a good understanding of the variability. But I also want you to note that under the revenues, our revenues increased by 7.6% over the same period last year. How is that possible? Hotels were able to charge more per-room rental than they were the year before. So those two factors are what we really watch, hotel occupancy, and it's called average daily rate. If you look at our occupancy, you see we have a nice margin for growth as well. Right now, our hotels for the year average 57.8% occupancy. That means that we have about 43% growth available to us yet. Forty-three percent of the rooms that were here in the county went unsold. So we do have a lot of margins for growth as well, but what they were able to charge went from $88.25 on average up to $91.24 on average. So that's a really, really good sign, okay? And, sorry, talked about that already. You might say, well, we're here, we are in 2015, why aren't we looking at the 2014 audit? Our last payments from our hotels aren't received until February 15th. And again, I'm working on a few of those delinquent ones now. I do expect to collect those, and if I don't, I have a process that I do follow, legal process, and I wish that judge hadn't retired, I'm pretty used to it. Anyway, we do have a process that we can follow. I don't believe that that's going to be necessary, but that is worth coming. So our final payments come in on or around no later than February 15th, and then our audit is done the first two weeks in March. So I'll have my 2014 audit in the works by the beginning of March. The realignment of the CVBs reduced our overhead expenses and eliminated duplication of efforts between the separate CVBs and has allowed us to create a structure that's really moving us forward quite effectively. Keep in mind, the Convention and Visitor Bureau funding is solely from hotel assessments. In the past, we used to also sell memberships as well as advertising. The board made a conscious decision no longer to do that because that meant we were up against other community organizations for community resources, as well as it took us off our specific mission of driving overnight hotel rooms. And we also, when they asked me to manage the Bay County Convention and Visitors Bureau, one of the first actions I took was not only to say no more memberships, no more advertising, but in order for anyone other than the hotels to be advertised in this wonderful $2.2 million advertising campaign at no cost to their business, they have to join the Chamber of Commerce. And so it drove new members to the Chamber of Commerce. We didn't get a payback for that financially, but it sure helps us, and Mike Stewart and I work great together, we're very good friends, as well as good colleagues. The most important thing is the Convention and Visitors Bureau, the Chamber of Commerce, and Bay Future, along with all the economic development organizations, work to complement each other. We have no duplication of efforts, we don't repeat programs, we're very distinct, and we have nice boundaries where we say, like, for example, I was doing filming for our Pure Michigan National Advertising Campaign. We had a helicopter that was carrying a tall ship coming into the bay because that's what we wanted to feature as one of the components of our national advertisement. I went to the Economic Development Offices, I said Trevor and Joanne, and at that time, Scott, said, "Is there anything you guys need me to capture while I'm paying for this expensive helicopter?" And so they laid out the geographic areas that they needed aerial footage for. I was able to collect those with no extra cost to me and no cost to them, but now they have it available, that raw B-roll that they could use in their economic development efforts. So that works out really nice as well. And to kind of wrap it up, oh, I already said we don't duplicate. And our purpose is very specific, to attract overnight visitors, and our mission is specific to increase overnight visitations in Bay County and the Great Lakes Bay region. That's the only reason that we exist. So a few other things that I'm working on specifically in Bay County, I participated on the planning team as we sought out public input for the vision on improvements for access to the bay. This is a personal project as well as a professional project for me. I want to see our beachfront area reestablished to its grandeur, and we are losing tourism business as a result of not having access to the bay. That's the bottom line, I'm not going to sugarcoat it. We need to clean up that beachfront, and so I'm kind of trying to help push that effort forward as well. And what I did to help with that is I conducted a residential study, not only for the beach access, but also we wanted to make sure that we weren't doing economic development and tourism that the residents didn't want to see. And so I worked with Michigan State University and East Carolina University to do a residential study, and I'll have the final results of that for next month. I'll be delivering that to anyone that's interested in seeing those results, but it talks about what the residents want to see, what they don't want to see, and it talks about the beachfront access. So I think it'll be a very valuable tool. And, you know, so what's nice is that it didn't cost us a lot to do it because I can do all the analysis and help with the study, so our cost was very low on that. I also worked with Laura on the muck, and I always kind of laugh when I say she's my muck girl. So we worked together on that. We're just waiting for the report to be signed on the recommendations to move forward for the beach cleanup, and then we'll work towards implementation of that. And then I keep this on the forefront at the Great Lakes Bay Regional Alliance as well, making sure that we continue to advocate for it. It's a good environment for public access to our waterways, and we absolutely need to do that. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll address any questions if anyone has any. And again, I invite you to dive deep with us on May 20th. If nothing else, you'll have a great lunch.
Commissioner Quinn.
Annie, I heard you mentioned, it might be in the Bay County financial statement, the dues that haven't been received. Is that the number that's in parentheses?
Actually, no. That, what you're seeing in parentheses is I take the year prior to, and I estimate what I'm expecting to receive in a monthly fashion. And so that was just an estimate of what we expected at the end of 2013. 2014, what's in arrears, there are four properties that haven't paid their loans.
Those numbers reflected in?
Those are not reflected in the 2013 audit. I'll be giving you those final numbers in 2014. Hopefully, there won't be any negatives.
And then, I guess I was kind of looking through here, but who did you say was required to join the chamber for, I missed that one?
Any restaurant, or attraction, or event that wants to be listed under the Convention and Visitor Bureau's advertising on our website, you know, in our publications, in our calendar of events. We don't charge anybody to be in our publications or electronic media. And we do e-blasts in our social media. If they want all of that, all they have to do is pay their Chamber of Commerce dues, and I don't ask them for any more than that.
Okay. And then, one last thing, you were talking, access to the lakefront and the muck are two separate issues, right?
Yes and no. In the visitor's mind, they're not. Not at all. The visitors want to, well, you know how it is, you want to go, when you go to Florida, I heard you say you have a place down in Florida. I heard you say that before the meeting starts, right? Where's your place? Okay. So Pummel Beach is this beautiful, and it's my favorite beach in all of Florida, so that's why I was paying attention. It's got this beautiful white sand beach. Now, if I saw a muck there, it would take away from that. So what I would like to see is the beach restored to what it was when I was a little girl going there and enjoying it. I don't think the muck is a separate issue, personally, but I'm not a scientist in that regard.
That's good, because I think Laura was just down to Detroit with the Corps, and they don't care what anybody thinks.
Yeah.
So somehow, if you've got any power to leverage or input, you need to be utilizing that so that, you know, I don't know if there's any way possible, the way they think that we can ever, we're trying to capture an extra thousand foot just to clean it up.
Yes, absolutely.
And what are they going to give us, a deer track walk from upshore down to the wire?
Yeah.
If you've got any influence, that'd be great.
I'll continue to work with Laura and with Tom Hickner. Oh, by the way, I want to thank your clerk as well, Tom Hickner, for providing me with the residential mailing as well. So without them, I wouldn't have been able to do it. As soon as I get the results from this study, and I'm expecting, again, those within the next few weeks, the first person I was giving them to was Laura, and saying, okay, what's our plan of action now? And the Great Lakes Bay Regional Alliance Advocacy Committee has this as one of the top priorities. So it's not just Bay County, we're not the only ones working on this. We have support from Midland County and Saginaw County, and not just the tourism industry. We have support from the healthcare industry, the school systems, the business people, the manufacturers. Everybody knows that this is a gap in our products that we have, and we need to resolve this issue. So this is, you know, we're not weak, which is really nice.
Very good. Anyone else?
Thanks, sir.
Annie, it's a pleasure to see you.
Annie, it's a pleasure to see you. Motion to receive would be in order.
Go.
Any other discussions? With none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Judge. Under City of Bay City, we have an application for industrial facility tax exempt certificate.
Support.
Discussion. No discussion, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Moving right along into reports and resolutions of committee, we have Ways and Means, Commissioner Coonan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolution 2015-21, this is the fiscal year 2015, equitable sharing agreement with the Sheriff's Department, I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. With none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
2015-22, OHSP Traffic Enforcement Grant Projects with the Sheriff's Department, I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussions?
No discussion.
All right, no discussions, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2015-23, this is the 2015 Scrap Tire Project Mosquito Control, I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. With none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
2015-24, Light Trap Data Collector Contracts from Mosquito Control, I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. With none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
2015-25, Control Material Bids Mosquito Control, I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. With none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2015-26, Relay for Life Fundraiser through the Register of Deeds and Personnel Department, I move this resolution.
Order.
Discussion. I do have a note. This is our 20th anniversary of being involved with Relay for Life with our Bay County employees, so I really do appreciate what they do. All the proceeds will actually go to American Cancer Society, so awesome job for the girls from Register of Deeds and Personnel, so thank you. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
2015-27, Golf Course Fairway More Recreation and Facilities, I move this resolution.
Order.
Discussion. With none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
2015-28, this is the payables for the county bayonet and center ridge arms, I move this resolution.
Order.
Discussion. With none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
2015-29, various budget adjustments, I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. With none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And, Mr. Chairman, 2015-30 and 2015-31 will refer back either to administration, and it'll allow us to get some additional information on that, and when we get that information, we'll bring it back to the committee.
Any discussion? With none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That's, Mr. Chairman, the end of the business from Ways and Means.
Thank you, Commissioner Coonan. We'll move to Personnel and Human Services, Commissioner Lutz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today, I'd like to bring forth Resolution Number 2015-32, which is the inmate administrative services contract with Blue Cross Blue Shield for the Sheriff's Department, I move that resolution.
Order.
Discussion. With none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Next one is 2015-33, the acceptance of the Bay County Vulnerable Adult Protocol for the Division on Aging, I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion. With none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Number three is 2015-34, which is the second attorney position under corporate counsel, I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussions. With none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
2015-35 is for the Fair Board, prepared ground use for 2015 from Recreation and Facilities, I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion. With none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next one, Mr. Chairman, is Resolution 2015-36, which is the annual plan for work for both 2015 from MSU. I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion. With none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next is Resolution 2015-37, Mitchell and McCormick Licenseure Agreement Renewal for 2015 from the Health Department, I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion. With none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next is Resolution 2015-38, which is the purchase of government service credit for James Summer, Department of Water and Sewer, from the retirement board. I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion. With none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion carries.
Final one for mine is Resolution 2015-39, which is the vacancies in the Sheriff's Department, 911 Central Dispatch, the Health Department, Building and Grounds, Information Systems, and Mosquito Control. I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion. With none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
So I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Lutz. We'll move into Board of Commissioners, Commissioner Tilly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have Resolution 2015-40, Report to the County Executive, I so move this resolution.
Order.
Discussions. With none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That includes business from the Board of Commissioners.
All right, Commissioner Tilly, didn't mean to cut you short. Moving right along, reports of the county officials and departments, anything from the county executive?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. We'll move into unfinished business, anyone? Under new business, I think, John, if you want to come up, we have some information. As you're aware, one of our elevators have been out since October. Some of you, not everyone, has been taking the stairs. And hopefully, the other elevator, which is just as old as the one that's down, stays functional. So, John, you had an opportunity to talk with someone today?
I did. I had an estimator come in from Schindler to look at our situation, not, he was here to provide a price for a replacement, not to rebuild one. His thoughts are, we could operate two separate independent cars, maybe one for the public, one for employees, because the problem lied, if we replaced the motor on the one, we would have to bring the controls and replace the second motor too, so they work together. His suggestion would be to separate them. He said the amount of employees, I think we got about 70 of them, and for the public traffic, he was up there and he was watching the one car and how much it was moving. He said, "You don't have that much movement in here that you guys would be able to get away with one car for employees and one for public." Now, one for public, or whichever one you wanted to use, a new car would operate three times faster. I did have, and then he's going to give back to us a price, and the problem is, I said it's going to take a couple of weeks, and that's on the replacement for the car that's down. They did give me a quote on repairing the motor, which came to a little bit under $70,000. I went off and found some other companies that would be willing to, did the repairs even up on the ninth floor, they would pull the blade to the floor and machine it up there without the removal. I got, like I said, the quote was $69,000 and some odd hundred dollars. I got a quote from York, which their rebuilding of the machine was $29,000, I got a quote for $7,500. And that's doing the work here inside. So I revealed that to them today after we went through, I mean, I didn't, I didn't give them the numbers because, you know, they, of course, there's going to be a markup on that. And I said, "Yeah, the loan price was $29,000, I got $7,000." You know, what kind of markup are we talking? So I asked him to sharpen his pencil, go back with York's quote in mind, and he said, "The labor." When he saw this, he said, "That's going to cut the price in half as far as the labor goes," so.
Do we have a contract on those elevators?
We have a service agreement, which they deem that the motor is obsolete. Our contract doesn't cover obsolete equipment in years.
Commissioner Lutz, I saw your hand go up first, you have a question?
Well, I talked to Kristen earlier today, John, because you're doing all this stuff, and I just had to mention to Kristen that some of the things that were built years ago were built a lot better than the things that are built today. So that a motor built back in 1938 and has been functioning ever since, even though it's refurbished with new parts for a given element within the motor, may even last longer than a new motor that comes in that would, its years of life service is quite a difference. They, and I explain to her, and I run into this all the time, especially with some of the plumbers that I deal with in business, that years ago, hot water tanks were built to last 30 years, and most of them even went even a little bit beyond that. Today, if you can get five to eight years out of it, you're getting a lot. So it's just kind of what I was, you know, pointing out, and, you know, we may want to go ahead and look at this replacing the armature and brush it with the existing housing rather than replacing the whole motor, but, you know, we'll see what the numbers shift.
There are pros and cons to replacing versus rebuilding. The longevity, of course, is an issue, because I've had one rep from Schindler saying, you know, if you bought a new motor today, the life expectancy of that motor is going to be half of what you have today.
Right. And I'm sure that, working with Kristen, you guys will come up with some options to come back to the board with.
Yeah, we're going to meet Monday, we're saying Monday, and hopefully, I will have a revised quote, hopefully, from Schindler on the rebuilding of it. I know I won't have a quote on the replacement at that point, but...
Okay. And I see, Commissioner Coonan. John, is the motor the only issue with the elevator? Is there any other?
Right now, it is, yes. Armutator and armature is shorted out. There's some insulation, it's a fine piece of paper, it's a white paper, they call it, and there's a, it's a 1934, so.
Is that, is that a quote from Schindler that is wrong with it, or whoever, or whoever built that?
Well, at first, they thought it was the drivers. And then they figured, um, to come in and check the drivers, well, it's not the drivers, they saw some parts from the armature flying on it, and then they took out some fuses, and then they tried to fix, temporary fixed on it. But the one thing, if we did replace the motor, we'd have to replace the controls, and that's where the separation would come in, if we replace the controls for the motor and keep the motor and the controls from that, is parts for the second car. And then we'd have two different cars, we'd be operating with each other, but independently.
So you're suggesting just change the motor, then?
Well, I guess I'd wait until this revised quote comes in.
So if you change the motor, you don't need two separate cars, right?
If they rebuild the motor, we won't need...
Because I don't know how you're going to keep people off of one elevator and go off there when open, but...
Well, with the new controls that would come with the new motor, there's all kinds of options we could do. We could use that just for employees, and you can have it only go into certain floors. You can...
Make sure it's here before we... Anyone else? We'll be waiting to see what those numbers come in at. We appreciate your time. Thank you. Anyone else under new business? We'll move into miscellaneous. I do, I see Joel's here. Joel, maybe if I can get you to come up. I know that we didn't have an opportunity, and there's been a number of things going on. Commissioner Durancheck is working on some wording in a resolution that will hopefully help push our legislators to address the issue. And I've had a number of people ask if Bay County has had any occurrence of measles.
We do not have any measles.
Very good.
Our waiver rate is lowest in the state of Michigan at 1.5%, and most of those, the overwhelming majority, are medical waivers, not philosophical waivers.
Very good. Any questions for Joel, as he's up here, we'll be addressing it next month.
I would just like to, thank you very much for information you've been providing me in my quest to do this resolution. It's been very helpful, Joel.
All right, thank you. Do we have any announcements? Yes, Commissioner Lutz?
Yeah, we do.
Yes, we do. And did it look good?
It looked good when I seen it the other day, and it was underbodied.
Very nice. So it was worth a trip. I think they went to Ohio? Yep, good job, good job.
And the government worked real well, they rolled it back.
That's, that's a good start.
One trip.
One trip. All right. 2015 appointments in March, we have Bayonet Behavioral Health, three, three-year terms expiring, that'd be Pat McFarlane, myself, and Bill Powell. In June, we have a Library Board, one five-year term. Kristen Rivet, Rivet, I'm sorry. And in October, we have a Lang Bank Authority, one at large representative, and that's a three-year term. We also have Department of Human Services Board of Directors, it's a one, three-year term, Cynthia Howell. I should note that that's actually a governor's appointment, so it's not something that we're going to be addressing, but that's what's coming up. And Board of Canvassers, there's two four-year terms, Walter Wozniak and Matt Lance. And again, the nominees submitted by major political parties, that being both the Democrats and Republicans. In November, Building Authority, two six-year terms, Gary Phillips and Rick Bukowski. And in December, Division on Aging Advisory Committee, four two-year terms, that'd be in Districts 1, 3, 5, and 7. Okay? Any need for closed session?
There is none.
So with that being said, Commissioner Durancheck, I'm sorry, what did you say?
Motion to adjourn is always in order.
Of course, very good. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned, thank you.